We call this meeting ordered, we welcome everyone. We'll start off as we normally do with our prayer request list, and it's quite long tonight, so just bear with me. Need to remember, my wife Misty and her, and my mother-in-law Ms. Gay, she's been pretty sick. Need to, remember Stephanie Johnson's family, her mom passed away. Angie Bamford, his grandson's sick. Larry Edelman, his wife's recovering from surgery. Sarah Tinpenney's grandfather passed away. Lucinda Sharp, father passed away. Jennifer Cook's father passed away. Marie Weiser is recovering from surgery. Marshall Burke, she had a baby. The mom and the baby are doing great. Amy Manning and Becky Hackett, mother's sick and in rehab to get her strength back. Rachel Kelly's son is having shoulder surgery. Jared Stenningberg, upcoming surgery. And that's all I have on this list, or any others that we need to add.
Unspoken.
Unspoken. If not, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, for the health you've given us to be here tonight. We know there are many mentioned that don't have that health tonight, we just want to pray for those, pray for those that are waiting, waiting on them. We want to pray for the, those that have lost loved ones. We know that's a hard thing, we pray that you'll give them a comfort that only you can supply them. We always want to be perfect for our schools, we've got many sicknesses going around, have been going around. Pray that you'll get those cleared out, Father, and get our kids back to where we're, we get, be healthy again. And Father, we just want to always be perfect for the kids in this system. We want to pray that you'll keep them safe and that they'll get a great education here and be able to continue on in their lives. But we just want to thank you for your sons, in his name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off tonight with a presentation. First one will be our state champion GHS golfer, Ms. Sophie Linder. Mr. Tim Towns, if you can come up, and I want to say something. I believe this will definitely not be the first time you're hearing her name, so this is just the beginning.
Yeah, I think so. Sophie, you want to come up? Ms. Sophie has been recognized because she's the winner of the 2019 TWSAA Golf Individual State Championship, girl, small class, this past fall. I'll make sure I get this right. She was the 2019 district and region medalist and shot a record low of 664 in the region tournament. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Scotty, hey, you want to present this to?
Yeah.
Hey, did you get this one out here? I don't know. Let's get it out. Hey, Daddy, you want to get in this?
Sure.
Hey.
Pretty plain wall now.
Yeah. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say Sophie has put in a lot of, talking to her dad and her mom, she does a lot of traveling. She has to miss some school, but she's always been great about making those things tough. But we're hoping that Sophie can maybe make a living playing golf, I'm sure she does too, she's, she's pretty good. So, but she does, she does put a lot of hard work in time and traveling to do it, and we're really excited that she's representing Central High School.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Young lady, thank you so much for representing this county school system the way that you have.
You're welcome.
That's a good example for everybody else, and I genuinely appreciate all the effort in that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us.
Thank you, Sophie.
Thank you, Sophie. Congratulations.
She, she shot a 64, shot a 160.
I challenged you some putt cut, but it ain't gonna work.
The Hannah Soler, they're not?
They're in the Philippines, and he didn't get back in, I don't guess. They were working on a project area for a university, so we'll put him off to next month, that's okay.
Okay. All right then, move into next month. You'll have to bear with me a little bit tonight, a little bit behind. All right, let's move on to our consent item. Do we have a motion on our consent item?
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, Mr. Apple with a second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hopefully everyone had a chance to look at their superintendent actions. We will move on to new business A. This is the SEHS request for two assistant coaching supplements for the soccer programs. Do we have a motion on new business A?
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, yes, any discussion? Go ahead.
Well, I've spoke with the director, and he can probably speak this, I was concerned with the cost of this, talking about our AEs that we're going to try and get lined up, and so I feel like we're all here on the right, I think we're all here on the same, for the right reason, but, but Director, if you want to try and help me, you explained it to me, I want you to explain it to me.
I think it's a question that Marty asked. I think, I think his understanding was we were hiring two full-time like we would employees, because, you know, he said, what will I do the rest of the day? And that's probably a good question for the community understanding, this is only like a two-week supplement for a person, so it's nowhere even close to like an educational assistant. I think Mr. Manning had a good question earlier, he doesn't know if we did this. To me, even though I'm a coach, Matt, this is a liability issue. You can see the numbers at times, you know, you've got to understand, this is both schools, this is the whole county coming together, it ain't one, it ain't, it's, I think at one time or two days, I think one day they had the eight, one guy had 80 kids, okay? That's just too many from a liability issue, keeping, even if they're 80 great kids, I mean, you know, even 40, that's too big. But hopefully, for, for very minimal pay, we can get good coaches and they can help each other out as a plan. Normally, we would just put this in the budget for the next year, but we did feel that there's such a need from a liability issue, we need to go ahead and address this, where we get...
What would be the procedure on picking who the coaches will be?
Well, normally, you would yell who that, unless there was an issue, the head coach would go to the principal, the principal would write a letter of recommendation on to hear. What I think their plans are, they, they're real comfortable with each other, I think the girls, it's going, it's a whole lot of time for one of them at school, but I think the girls is going to help the boys, and the boys is going to help the girls. So they'd already be there anyway, and hopefully their schedule would be pretty conducive.
Okay.
I would add, just, just simply because I had a young lady that played all, all through this school, these programs have grown.
Exiled.
It's, it's massive, it's...
What, we went to district three years in a row?
And, and it went to district three years in a row, so, I mean, it's, just looking at the volume of kids that have gone into this over that period of time has been massive. And, and again...
And we've got a lot of kids and a lot of young men and women that are participating in this particular sport, that are not participating in basketball, or softball, or volleyball. I just think that anytime we can get these young men and women involved in something, it's a good thing.
Well, and just, just to say this, just so that I can say the deal, and feel good about it, you know, we, we think about basketball scholarships, and football scholarships, and things like that, there are a lot of soccer scholarships, and there are a lot of scholarships for people that play golf and things like that, everything, so, you know, that, that might need amount of support that we're asking to give them, and this program could possibly land a child with a scholarship at a university somewhere, I see it happen every day where I am.
And it, and it is a liability issue, that's still a lot of racial per adult, you know, when you're, and it's just two weeks for program. And like I said, normally, we would include this in the budget, but it's just a point, we thought it was a problem, you know, after the numbers had grown like it is.
Now, the only concern I have, and the concern I have with this, after talking with the director about this, I understand, being that this is Gorsforn-Cartage, it's combined soccers. I didn't realize there was that meaning. But also, I mean, I'm, I'm actually for this, but on the back burner, we got also considered, we're probably opening up another can of worms. Baseball, softball, and volleyball, you do not pay an assistant. Now, keep in mind, you don't have the volume of the kids that you do in soccer. Football, you pay assistant coaches, but also keep in mind, this is probably going to open up another can somewhere for baseball, softball, and volleyball. Not saying that they don't need a paid assistant either.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that's not something we need to take a look at, because it's probably a point that...
But at this point here...
If you want your program before they need to beat, you're driving it over.
I would have to have, I'd hate to have 80 kids, and I was in charge of 80 kids. I mean, or 40 or whatever.
Well, you, you have both schools combined, normally you would have a coach at each school, I mean, you're not asking anything.
Yeah, it's still way cheaper than if you had two programs, you know?
How do you get by with a two-week window for our system, though? Just a two-week window?
Well, it's not a two-week window, it's based off of two weeks' pay. They may work year-round, it's not, they would never recoup, they got a month of time, it's just, and that reason we done that years ago, that's a good way to nap, like, like years ago, people might have started, it was $500 supplement, well, in 1950, that was pretty good money, but if you didn't update that, so, once we went to the number of days or weeks, if you get a master's, or you're there 30 years, and Joe's our five, it kind of equal itself out, in other words, you'd hope what's good in '82 would be good in 2022, you know, percentage-wise.
Yeah, we changed that, actually, I have it right here, we changed that in July 14th of 2015, where we upped the salaries, because...
It gives its own raises, in other words, if, if the school system gets a raise through the state, or you get a master's degree, or like I said, Scotty's got 30 years, and a master's, and Barry's got five, and a, and a, and just a bachelor's, he ought to deserve them, you know, he's been there longer, and kind of built itself rewards in for it, if it makes any sense.
And Tommy, I understand what you're saying, but that's not to say that if another program comes up with the same problem, you know, that the board won't be willing to look at that too, you know what I mean?
But I think somewhere down the road, we do need to look at them at least...
And we can look at that if you'd like us to, to put it with or without the budget this time.
I think, I think, you know, fire for, you know...
Yeah, he wants her to look, look at the numbers for the budget this time, for sure. All right, any more discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Let's move on to new business B, and this is going to have a couple of different motions, so just bear with me. The first one will be a bid approval for portable one at Cartridge Elementary for the highest bid in the amount of $536. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Apple, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Second one is a bid approval for a portable two at Cartridge Elementary for the only bid in the amount of $276. We have a motion on new business B two.
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion?
I should have asked, but, and I, I know this is, but this is removal. It's how many days of removal, how many days?
We give them, David, what do we give them on the, the amount, was it, Frambert, what?
I think it was 90 days.
Okay. 60 days?
60 days.
Yeah. Is that from when, the night that we approved?
From the night, oh, yeah.
No, David, if, when they're removing these things, if they caused any damage or anything? I can't imagine it caused any damage, but I'm sure that they were comfortable for any kind of damage.
I think it's broken the contract. I'm pretty sure I've done you right.
The fence at Gordonville, the complaint, we'll have to remove, maybe have to remove that out, we'll think it out that day tomorrow.
Right.
We, but that's on the...
Okay. Like up here, we've tried to get it, so that, we've tried to work out where to get them on the weekends, and come out around, and there's nothing ready to hit.
Right.
Hopefully, they got off campus anyway.
Right, yeah, that's what I was worried about.
Like you said, the gourins was on one of the fence, might be an issue, but, but it's a pretty bad shape of the fence anyway, we probably need to look at it.
As long as they done it on the weekend, because they...
That's what we're trying to turn it.
If we could get in those, a bad day, they try to move that.
We always do a whole process.
Okay.
We had that signed in the, in the contract.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I may be looking at this wrong, but...
Yes, sir.
If you look at that opening bid, the copy, is that the opposite of what this says, or am I looking at it wrong? Are we taking, if you go to the copy of the opening bid, it says, is this for paying for the removal?
No, they, they're paying us.
They're paying us, yeah. On this first one?
So we, yeah, you go with the highest.
They, they bought that for us.
They bought it, they bought it for that, and they're getting rid of it, and it's kind, they're paying to give it out. I know, but over here, on the one page, it shows the same company on all three of them, and I was, I found, let me look and see where that was at, that was that page. I was confused, because this is too different. I don't know what I was looking at now. It said, no, I'll tell you what it is, it's got, on this page right here, that's showing the amounts, it's showing the same guy on all three bids, but he wasn't the highest bidder on, on this, we had complete companies on the first one.
No, he was, he was...
He's the highest bidder on all of them.
Where, where am I at? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. It does get confusing sometimes.
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? We're on number two, we have a roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business B three, this is the bid approval for portable three at Gordonville Elementary for the only bid in the amount of $50.
So moved.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCaglin, any discussion? Not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to new business C. This is a bid approval for two type D 78 passenger school buses. We have a motion on new business C.
So moved.
Manning, do we, Mr. Shoulders with a second. Any discussion?
What is, what, what's the life expectancy of them buses?
18 years. Am I not right? 18 years.
Buses are safe, 15 years.
That's if they keep meeting, they have grounded them, you know, for little or nothing, but that's what you hope, get 18 years, because we'll never, no more roads than we got, exceed the mileage, and we've always got really good reports off the boat, but they can ground them, you know?
18 years?
Yeah.
I'm sure these things, are they going to be on DE, on the debt? Are they running on debt or not?
Yeah, the new ones are, I'm sure they are.
I'm sure they are, yeah. I didn't know if they was exempt.
And that's a big expense for the county, that people don't realize, that we're furnishing, that we don't have to.
That's right.
That is a luxury that anybody in the county really don't, they don't really under-realize that big yellow limo is running around here.
At $200,000, basically. And then the other thing is, you know, we get our people, and we get spoiled as parents, you know, we, we don't have to come to the door, I mean, it, you can go centralized locations, and you hate to get to that, but the bus shortage keeps getting to that, that might be something, you have to look at getting some drop-off points, you know what I mean? Pickups.
It just, I just think people don't really realize that, and...
Well, we're very lucky to live in a situation that we provide that.
We can do that, and we're, you know, it's just, but that's just a lot of money for that.
So these are basically for next year?
Yeah, where they order them for the next year, I guess.
Well, they said they'd be here in 90 to 120 days. You think we'll have them by the beginning of the school year?
We hope to.
Any more discussion? Not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business D, it's a bid approval for diesel fuel, we have a motion on new business D.
So moved.
Shoulders, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? Not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business E, not forgot to ask anything. It's the aptitude contract. Do we have a motion on new business E?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion?
Could, I'd like to say something after.
Yes, sir.
I, I know, like, David and Scotty's not to think any other way, I know y'all are big on computers, and, and I've never been happy with their website since I've been here, it's always just looked to me like a website with some pictures on it. This thing, I want to talk about it, we had a staff meeting to decide, we was looking for something, and we went around the room, talked to East Department, what they, in a dream world, they could have, okay? So helped me, about two mornings later, I get a lot of junk mail, I was getting ready to go on through it, and I was getting ready to throw it away, and I looked, and there's a customized, I thought, this is pretty cool, it's not taking enough time. For the same money, it's a little more to start at, but, but I want you, I'm going to give you something to look at, you can go to Van Buren County School, Board of Education, this company, we can show, not that you'd want that, but it can have Scotty Lewis, board member, email, home address, it's got, I know, but I'm saying, it's, right here, it's just a present thing, but, but we, every child, we hope, it's Smith County, and every parent will visit this on a daily basis, it will tell you what's homework, what's going on, unless it's Smith's class, it'll tell you what's for lunch at Union Heights, it'll tell you the ball game's going on, when the district tournament starts, testing, it is pretty cool, and it'll be an app on your phone, and it'll be free. And it is, it is very, very cool, to say the least. And even down to the point, we, we could have an advertisement page on it, and have, probably pay for the, for the whole app thing, if we want to do it. But it's pretty, pretty nice, what we're doing, we'll be able to fill out applications online, which we shouldn't have been able to, you know, we'll be able to do it all, and it's really, really very fortunate to have something. It was based, it's actually cheaper per year than what we're doing, it is, it's a little higher on the startup cost, you'll get the initial web design and everything, but other than that, it's cheaper than what we're paying per year, so we're pretty excited about it.
How long does it take it to get it?
They're shooting for March the 15th, this year.
Wow.
Yeah.
Our other contract runs out on March 15th.
It runs out March 15th, so they're shooting for March.
So would it be customized for each school, or not?
It, well, actually, go in, Marty, you'll go, be able to go for Smith County Board of Education, you can go to New Middleton, break it down to New Middleton, tell what's for lunch, what's on, and then there'll be a live feed, there'll be an administrator at each school, that, that we can put on there for the day, they'll look at it, and they'll shoot it live, what's going on each morning. It's pretty...
So it's going to have to take a lot of work here to help get that?
Not, not to get it going, they were very user-friendly, I, I knew the director, she's a nice lady over at Van Buren, and she said it was as simple as it looked, they'd had great success with it, it'd be very customized to her county.
How long's the contract for, I didn't...
Uh, three years, you know what I'm saying?
Three years.
Three years. And he's, I asked the question, that if we, if we decided to renew with them, we won't have to pay that startup fee again, so, it's been redesigned on there, so, it's, it's a win-win for us, I think it's pretty cool.
Yep, mobile, aye. So I want to go on.
Yeah. Has Cumberland got that now? Good, I figured it did.
Yeah, we got it.
So you ready? But I was really, we were really impressed with that, like I said, Van Buren's got theirs up and running, and, and it, it will, it'll even let down, just like, we could even put things back and forth live the other day about what her, what her sickness rate was, you know, we're just getting calls, where we could actually say, hey, we're at 94, you're hearing these rumors, but we're at 94%, I mean, it would be a good way to communicate, to take, keep people more involved, yeah. And we're hoping people will check that on, we're, what we'd like to do, we would like to meet with our staff at each school, then we'd like to have an open house at each school, and try to get parents to come out, because we like, we would love for the parents to get to where they check this on a daily basis, and I just think it'd be a great way to, yes.
Would be.
Yeah, it's really, really, you're absolutely excited about it.
All right, any more discussion? Not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Let's move on to our discussion. First is our hot water heaters in the school bathrooms. And I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Lewis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I asked if that'd be placed on the agenda, after I had received a great number of telephone calls, about the ability for our children to have hot water in at least one sink in the bathrooms and schools to wash their hands with. And, and I'm going to be honest with everybody here, I, I didn't realize we did not have that option, you know what I mean? And kind of stumbled upon. And, and the, the basis of the phone calls, and comments, and things that I had been receiving was because of the comps that just revolve in sickness, and gomitres, and, and concerns about hand washing, and all this, and the other, and so, after talking to several people about it, you know, I looked at a lot of data and information on the CDC website about things such as that, Mayo Clinic, that I refer to a lot, because they have, they place a lot of information there. Um, you know, I, I thought it would be a good thing to put on the agenda to see about the possibility of it. Now, the only thing I have, and Director Smith and I have not talked about this very little, um, one would be structurally, do we have the ability, you know, to put a, a hot water line in a bathroom or something, or, because some of these schools are pretty old, you know what I mean? Or, or could we, could we look at making hot water available by having one of those little inline hot water things, an instant hot water thing, just put in a bathroom or whatever? But I guess my point is, um, if it cuts down the transmission of diseases, you know, and I'm going to use diseases as a broad term, um, if it cuts down on transmission of that because they're afforded hot water to wash their hands with, then I think it's a rational thing to consider. I mean, honestly, and again, I, I feel kind of like a moron, but that's nothing new, but I, I did not know that we didn't already afford that to our students, so, therefore it's down on the agenda.
Why don't we have hot water in there already? I mean, why don't we already have, I mean, friends can't get burned.
Well, I don't know what the reason was when they were designed, I don't know if it was facilities, I don't know if it's because of burns, I don't know, I can't answer that with, they, they, Scotty didn't, David, David, come up here, but, we have this conversation about, every year, when the sickness comes up, this time of year...
I mean, if you, I ran this off, if y'all would take that and read, but, turn it, about the second paragraph.
But David, talk about the, what we talked about, what we could do, what we might not could do, so, I mean, it's what, anything's possible, I mean...
If you throw enough money at anything, you do anything you want to. Uh, problem that you have with these systems is that you're going to, if you put a water heater somewhere in the building to run the bathrooms, I don't recommend putting a hot water heater just standing alone in a bathroom with exposed wiring, like plumbing. Uh, so if you put it at a rate, if you put it somewhere in the building, then you're
Uh, so if you put it at a rate, if you put it somewhere in the building, then you're gonna have to put a recirculating pump, and you're gonna have to pump water constantly, uh, to that sink. The second problem we've got is our sinks itself, they're single-use sinks, they don't have a hot water and cold water, so you're gonna have to change all your supply lines out and put a mixer under there to, where it will mix the hot and cold water to come up to that one of that, so.
David, don't interfere, do you know why, that's a good question, Joe, why were they not really?
Because it was so extensive that it's just not cost effective, it's just, I mean, you can imagine how much more water line you've got to run and, uh, all the pumps that have to keep that water circulating, because if you didn't put that in it, you know, it's your house, when you turn your hot water on, you gotta wait a few seconds for the water to get there, and imagine, imagine a building trying to do that, and those water, when you, even if you put an inline one, say, under the sink somewhere and you run that, you're still about a few seconds, if you push that button on the sink, 10 to 15 seconds, water cuts off, and you gotta hit it again, by that time, you're, you're, it just, it just don't work out very well.
Well, let me ask this, and, and of course, I, I saw this one right here, and I saw 10 more that said that hot water didn't make a difference, and then I saw 20 more that said it did, so I guess it's just like flipping a quarter, you, you flipped it long enough, you'll get heads or you'll get tails, doesn't matter. But I suppose my question would be this, if, if it is that, if, if there's a percentage of a chance that it reduces, because y'all know, just like I do, you know, kids in these elementary schools get sick or whatever, and it spreads like wildfire, and then you gotta scoop system down, whatever, if there's a percentage of an opportunity that having hot water to wash your hands, would, would make it a safer environment, you know, would it be unreasonable, Mr. Director, to ask for a, a cost study on putting, uh, just a, you know, a little, on the inline heaters or something other at a sink and just see, you know, what it would cost us to do that, the feasibility of it, or would it be unreasonable to ask for, you know, that kind of thing, to see what we'd be talking about?
Yeah, I don't, that's, I, I mean, I guess we get into an engineer.
Just talk about putting.
I, I like that question too, not that it, not that, I wish there, and it's, I just like, it made me think, when I said that, I wonder if the new schools are designed with a minute?
I think, I think what he's talking about, David, is like, the type of units that you put under your sink, it serves, serve one thing?
We've got some of those in the county.
The question I have, be realistic, how many kids are even washing their hands when they come out of that bathroom?
Quite a few, you've been shot, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they, they take their care pretty regularly.
That's one reason we had such a good, I think, rate on the sickness.
I think we've also had a issue with, is there soap dispensers?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, well, it's sanitized.
Is there paper towels or? The basic hygiene, I'm all.
You know, we've tried different kinds, it's just the bane, I've talked, Tony White out there in the camera, he said every school said to go through it and soak the spits, but just to teach, trick kids, beat the fire out of them, if you've been in the bathroom and watched them, they'll take it, bam, 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 they'll beat the fire out of them.
He's talking about, they'll tear it up too?
Well, they might, but they might not, but let me ask this question, is any bathrooms in this building right here that has hot water, cold water?
No.
Not, not here.
All of them's cold water, every facility we have, every school.
Well, no, we've got one or two, we got one or two lodges.
We were able to put some at Gornville Elementary, and it worked out, because there, there was a mop sink right on the other side.
Right behind the, the old hot, there you go, right behind the research.
And their seats have, their old ones that has the hot and cold water both on them, so that one does have.
Well, I mean, the fixture itself, by the way, so what you're saying, you press it, it runs for a minute or two to come, and it turns off after pressing it or whatever, but that's a fixture, we can change the fixture, that's not a big, that's not a big dollar thing, but my question is, could we, could I ask, would it be unreasonable to ask for a, for a, a cost study or a projected cost of what it might be to use, and, and I know we can't run, I can do it, rain, I'll tell you where I go, and the water lines, that won't through a gun, I don't have first idea, probably under concrete floor somewhere, but would it be unreasonable to ask, uh, ask for what it would take to use like an inline heater on one sink or something other, so they'd have that availability, is that, is that unreasonable to ask for that study to see if it's even feasible?
Get a number and decide what we want, like you said, we can do it, it's just where you want to spend it.
Something that we can't, I mean, it might be feasible, but, but since, uh, I mean, I have had a lot of phone calls about it, and then at the end of the day, you know, we, we're representing the children and the employees, but we're also representing constituents that are asking questions, so that's the reason I put it on the agenda.
So are we basically asking for one, access to one in each bathroom, not never sink, ever, just we had access to?
I mean, my understanding, like our school, there's three sinks in there, uh, my understanding is that like one have ability to have hot water, um.
Why don't we ask how many bathrooms we have in each facility, I mean, is there more than one in the Gornville Elementary?
Bathroom?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I just.
We counted today, and, and I believe there's like, if you count dressing rooms, kindergarten rooms.
Teacher lounges.
K rooms, teachers lounges, you know, group bathrooms.
None of them have hot water, like the teachers lounges.
But I believe what Mr. Lewis is basically saying, if you had access of a girl in each school had, or a boy had access to one, if they needed, what it would cost.
Yeah.
We can lay that.
I ain't talking about locker rooms or anything else, I'm just talking about, could we supply a sink in one of the bathrooms in each boy's bathroom, each girl's bathroom, where they had the ability to wash their hands in hot water, if that's what, you know what I mean? I know we can't go through every building and do whatever, however, folks, I'm gonna tell you, it's kind of hard, it's a hard question for me to answer, where it gets put, maybe why do our teachers lounges have it and our children don't have access? I, that's, that's hard for me to answer in a, in a proper way, so.
The only problem I would have with any of that is, I don't like calling it hot water, warm water.
Well, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but in other words, have warm water, because we don't want to put.
Well, we don't want to.
We don't want to put hot water in a ba- in bathroom with a, with a kindergarten.
Just on the other side of it, just for, what do they tell you before you drink water out of a creek, river, spring, whatever, that's not been chlorinated? What do they tell you to do to the water? Boil it, to get rid of the parasites. You can't boil, you can't have the water in there boiling hot, I mean, you can't put your hands in it, that's what you do to kill germs. But I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it just, I don't see where the one water.
Wanted Luke.
I work at a hospital, they just tell you, wash your hands, get the dirt and grime, and you sanitize.
Get a cost of what it would cost, we'll try to break it down for school, like, one might be a lot, school might depend on the design higher than others.
So what it may be, I'm just asking, could we please examine it and see what's possible?
Also, soap dispensers and paper towels, or however we're using to dry our hands, if it's one of the push button dryers that they should use, or is it paper towels, or? What, David, how are we doing that?
Paper towels, it's, it's most of, we still got a few of the hand dryers left that are still working, we just don't replace those, because in my opinion, they're, they're not.
I know.
They're dirty.
What about the rolls, what about those?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, paper towels.
No, I'm talking about the ones that, it's linen, and you roll it, and then they replace them and wash them.
Yeah, they're, they're too expensive, it's, it's just not feasible.
Are they?
With, right now, we got a situation, what we're in with the company now, we use their product, they provide us with all the, for free of charge, all the dispensers, so they carry out the dispenser pretty regular, we get a new one for free, so.
Is that in all schools?
Yes.
That's hard to say.
Yeah.
To me, I'd just make sure there's soap and paper towels in every bathroom.
They, they should always be soap and paper towels, you know, we spend a lot of time using.
Time to wash their hands and turn the policies.
Mr. Chairman, that's the whole, in a nutshell, that's kind of what, the reason I put it on there, and if everybody agrees, just let him examine it and report, I'm, I'm good with that. I feel like I'm being a candidate, but.
Question. Ten four. If that's all the discussion on that, we will, uh, move to discussion B. This is a facility walkthrough for board members, Mr. Marty McCale, I'm gonna turn that over.
Well, I guess that follows a good note off of Scotty that he was unaware of what he was. How did you get that, that, by the, was it a call in, or did you walk in and find it yourself?
Well, two ways, I, we had a, uh, I had a call about it, and also, we had a problem with some of the water fixtures, and when I went down there after, just to look at, see what was going on, I realized it wasn't, none of them provided warm water, so.
Yeah.
It was kind of combination, but I did have several phone calls, but.
Well, my thinking is on this is, this takes time for us to be here, and we, we've done this on our own effort to be a board member, and I think, like Mr. Bayden, I appreciate him being here, and sometimes there's other faculty members here, David, and, and I think it's a little bit holding them in, holding everybody in account, that we care about them, and we care about the job they're doing, Tommy, and I know it takes time to do that, I understand that, but I think we, as a board, need to, and I know everybody can't be here, you know, Robyn's out tonight, things happen, I understand that, but if it was three of us, or two of us, you know, just to make an effort, you know, to do this once a year, and let these teachers, I mean, if it was an all-day thing, I think you'd go to each school and pick them out, and do the, how long does it take to walk through each school, and let people see that we're there and we're interested in their children, and, and their facilities, I mean, I'm just, we, they want to know that I'm interested, I know that, but I'm just one person speaking out, so that's the reason I wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Well, it's a real good time with that, and they just want to have their, uh.
Old houses.
Yeah, and you've got parents and teachers, and their, you know, children, everybody all around us, and you get to interact, not just with your teachers and, or, or obviously your faculty, because you have other, but, but your students, and then your, the parents are there, get a chance to speak to you, if they've got things on your mind, and.
But I'd like to see us do it selectively on one day, if we could all come to a conclusion, on a good day, Mr. Chairman, I, I just throw it out there, and let's try and do it before the year, the year's up, and if we have to do it half a day after lunch, one day on a Friday, you know, what's the best for everybody here, you know? Just somehow they'll get the ball rolling, and let these teachers and students see who, you know, who we are, you know?
I can tell you this, most, you, if you got something to hide, you don't want to pay, our teachers love to see you come. I know some of you are very, I mean, Joe, I know you, they, they light up when they see you come out there, because you usually take them something, too, but, excuse me, but, you know, I just like coming here, we want y'all to come in, we want you to see what we're not hiding, and I, I know your team, every time one of y'all are in the one building, they'll call and say, there's so-and-so's over there, we appreciate him, it tickles our death, don't we, Gene? They want you to see them working, it makes them feel good that you care enough to come, and you know you're always welcome, but I don't think you could go too much, they'd like to see you as much as you could get there.
We need, yeah, we'll, uh, everybody keep that on, keep that in your minds, and see if we can come up with a day maybe, or at least get, get to our school anyway, at least get to the day that you can get around to your school, it might be a little more, I'm the world's worst, I'll have to say, I'm not a good one about getting, getting back to the school as much as I need to be, but.
When is, Director, you have a date that you would say on, could you, we at least lay it in your hand, in your seat, and you come up with a date that you feel like would be good for you and the faculty?
We're, we're here every day, so it's good for us, it'd just be good if y'all would work, but it's, you know, you wouldn't want to go when they were testing, obviously, like T cap or something, but other than that, I think, I think they'd be thrilled to see any of your all, anytime you wanted to go, and I do think open house is a great time for the fact, too, because I think beating them see you, because the parents, students are all there, uh, even these kids pay more attention to y'all being there, they know who you are, and, and it'll be shocking, they're gonna get cards, won't they, we laugh, you know, but they, they didn't even know who you are, and they'll say something about y'all being there.
Chairman, if it wasn't baseball, for the whole board, you could always.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's that I didn't hear?
We could appoint a committee that goes around, which you, you could almost do that through the building committee, I guess, would probably be the, we have a building committee, we could almost do it through that.
You want to try to do that for us?
Let's, uh, yeah, we'll put this back on next month, just to, as a follow-up, and try to get this, get something lined up on that, at work. All right. Our annual policy review for January, anybody have any questions? If not, I do believe we need to enter into executive session.
Mike, I want you to go to the executive session.
Mr. Manning, Mr. Lewis.